Be much different. Including my wife, so I'm, I think I'm doing pretty good on that one.
That's good.
Yeah, she said the last name. She, yeah, yeah, so she was. Next meeting is your.
What do you think?
You will make it to your seat here fast.
How are you preparing? Oh wait, let me.
We gonna have enough? It's always one after.
Um, Jim and Dave will not be here, but Kim, Kim is not really feeling well either, but she said she's coming.
Yeah, Jim called me.
Yeah.
Said I, I gotta stay real close to the toilet.
Yes. Yes, so he's.
Mr. Graham, how are you?
Good, President. Right, how are you?
I'm good. I could be better. They just don't pay me enough for this.
No.
Bad, like.
I don't, we, I used to think everybody here was smart, so I realize.
And proceeds to just.
Cut and punish, I guess so.
More than you ever wanted to know about. I'm wearing too much too long. There's a lot of crap in there.
Hi Bob, how are you?
Very good.
Yeah. You know, I do that. Not very good. Don't ask him that question, you know what he'll say.
Well. Where's David at, you know, anybody?
Niagara Falls.
Okay.
So he's on vacation, and he, he even came last week, cause he wanted to see how to do this stuff.
I take it Danielle's not gonna be here then, we don't even have a corner.
What do you mean Danielle's not gonna be?
Huh?
Danielle's not gonna be here?
I don't know.
It's only six twenty-two.
Still no notice.
Give him eight minutes. So Kim will be here and then Danielle will be here. Yes, she said she was.
Kimmy'll be here. She always comes last minute.
You have to speak, like, put this really close to your mouth. Not right now.
I'm just looking, see if it's on.
Well, oh, and turn it off, yes.
It's on, the light's on anyway.
The light's on?
I don't hear something, yep. May not be. I'm driving through the countryside, Joe, and I'm looking at the corner at some of them fields, it's already tasseled out. I can't believe that, I've never seen July, knee-high.
Knee-high by the shore.
I pass field after field, I'm seeing the tassels, I'm going, they'll be picking corn next month.
You know what's weird though, I came back from Florida and you guys have got like tons and tons of corn, and I thought, oh my God, corn really doesn't, like, look at that, like, I was just kinda like, uh-oh. Within like four days, I said, I think I'd stop there and like watch.
Oh yeah.
Like, I'm not kidding, I would have loved to have like a, like a really, like a camera to do a fast.
Time lapse?
Yes.
They could do it.
Yeah, cause it, and then it was all of a sudden, it was like.
There's Kimmy.
Everywhere.
Beans aren't doing so good in some of the fields, but, well, they've, there's a lot of loss of crop in them bean fields.
Yeah, I had to replant twenty percent of my crop, my soybean crop.
And one guy over on, uh, six hundred, he had wheat in there, and when he got the wheat out of there, he planted corn in it. And the corn's probably knee-high.
Wow.
We had all that, about nine inches of rain, that probably helped it.
Beginning to get a complex. You know, these two are alright.
You aren't any farmer at all, are you, Joe? Are you?
Yeah.
Still that?
Yeah, I, I do all of our.
Oh, do you?
All of our stuff, yeah. Dad passed away, um, nine years ago.
Yeah.
Yesterday, and, uh, so I do it, I do it all.
I've seen, let's see, it was Saturday, I go, yeah, it was Saturday, I was going down seven hundred. And when I got by Kevin was pulling out and he had a, my nurse brighter full, and I'm going, now where's he going with that? Did he, you know? I mean, he had it loaded.
I don't doubt it.
And Sherry made a comment, she said, I think, I think Kevin better cover that bald head up or he's gonna get burnt. His little head with this shining in it. Kimmy, glad to see you.
Well, she was like, is anybody else up here? I said, yes. I think it's like some pressure.
I was, well, I remember I was walking up at two thirty. Before the July, like, my, my wife was like, I think I'm, I think I'm not awake enough to go to the hospital, I'm like, okay. And she was like, no, I'm gonna wait, I'm like. And you'll make sure you like, you call me when you're ready, like, you're an hour. In half an hour you're in your hospital, she was like, alright, so then she called us at five thirty, so like, I hopped on the car at six, and then my mom followed each other. We beat them to the hospital. We went and had a sit-down breakfast.
This is what happens with her kids, you just gotta wait till.
Well, we haven't had a little too much fun on the course of July, so he was a little slow.
He was slow.
He was a little slow to get up, and she was like, I hope to God I am like eight centimeters light in there.
What was she? Four.
And he was like, see, we were. He was like, can I go over and work out, cause her gym was right there, and she was like.
No, you're gonna sit right here.
She slavered all day. All day. We had, yeah, she had, she had her at seven oh eight.
Holy cow.
So the fifth though, or the fourth?
Fifth.
I love my first day of day though.
It was bad, I'll show you, cause she's been sending me pictures all day.
Well, yeah. Oh my gosh, so she's little.
Big brother was upset.
Oh, okay, her state upset, no, upset. Oh my gosh.
But he kept going, Mom, look at her eyes, and he like, I'm like. He's like, she has no boogies, and she was like.
I can't imagine her ever knows, I'm like. Hey Cutler, the youngest one was. I was about to ask, do you find your, uh. Maybe they changed it?
No, like, that's, like, I just talked to her, let you, well, two weeks ago.
And you asked her to use. So they got her. Everybody make sure to turn your microphones on and that your, um, things are close to your mouth.
Yeah, we're on video now, right? Is that the camera?
Yes.
When's that kick on?
We're stars.
It's on now?
Yeah, it's on.
We're stars now.
We're good to go.
Okay, call listen. Regular meeting is ordered for common counsel of the city of Elwood for July the seventh at six thirty P M. Roll call please.
Abernathy? Everson?
Here.
Keelish?
Here.
Noon?
Here.
Tiner?
Here.
Waters?
Right?
Here.
Okay, stand, say the pledge please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, infinite, just as it is.
Mr. Keelish, did you raise your prayer please?
Yes, dear Lord, thank you for this great day that we, you've given us, that you have so many times before. We appreciate the greenery, the colors, the vibrant colors, the textures. At the same time, we, we wanna stop, pause for a moment to, uh, remember the flooding tragedies in, in, uh, Texas, and any other, um, events that have gone recently around the world.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda is the Elsa tax abatement. Uh, this for approval of their compliance for their personal property and real estate property, resolution, resolution number twenty sixteen dash ten, and twenty sixteen dash twenty-four, and twenty fourteen dash twenty-one. Is there any questions on the tax abatement for Elsa Corporation?
And you, did you attend the meeting?
Yes. Yeah, Bill, Bill and I and.
Mark Krim.
Mark Krim was there.
Christie was there too, so. Everything, it's, it's an old tax payment, so, yeah, everything's good.
Yeah, everything's up to par, they're talking about adding another building.
They're still talking about the, getting the electric vehicles.
Right, right.
Parts. It's the number of boys, six hundred forty-nine, that's correct, so. Are you doing good?
Yeah, they're doing real good. Is there any questions from any of the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve Elsa's, can we do all three of these at one time?
You can.
Okay, we'll do all three at one time, if that's okay with the council. Need a motion please? Motion by Kim?
I'll second.
Second by, is that you missing who?
No.
All in favor, signify and say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the Noble Auto Building and Accessories tent and new tax abatement, and this is a great business, I'm telling you. Uh, this is resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, it's approving a statement of benefits in support of the application for property tax abatement for Noble Auto Building LLC, Noble Auto Accessories, and Window Tent Incorporated and related parties, and/or the owner of assets to be leased to the same for personal property. Bill and I and Christie all went through this, and that, I didn't recognize the building. And they, I mean, they've done so much to it, this guy's, he's actually, we got some photos, they're working on two of the police cars, well, police trucks, they're canine trucks, and they're doing, they do all the wiring, everything, I mean, from top to bottom, they do it all.
Where's this at?
Pardon?
Where's it at? Over here.
Oh, Sammy?
Yeah, where's it, where's it located?
That's the old, uh, Cadet Building down there on F Street.
Really?
You won't recognize it when you go down there.
Twenty-six thirty-five, I think.
Yeah, it's twenty-six thirty-five.
Okay.
And it, uh, I mean, it changed, they, they got the whole front end of it cleaned off, they're gonna put pavement there so customers have parking, he took us all through this, they've, they've got lifts, they've got everything in there, they do auto repair work, if you have a wreck, they do that. He's, he's really got quite an investment there, but he's got a lot of good people, they were putting a roof on when Bill and I were there, because they had roof problems, and they were fixing all that stuff. Uh, David is a real, real personable person, I mean, he just said anytime any of the council members would like to come down and, you know, walk through the building, they were more than welcome, he'd take them through and show everybody. So is there any questions on?
I do wanna, so there's a resolution, and that's for the personal property?
Right.
Then we have to do a resolution for the real estate, cause it's a new one, so like those Elsa ones, those were old, that's why we, I believe this may be the first new one that we've had.
So if anybody, nobody has a question, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion?
Motion by Joe, that's second.
Second.
Second by Sam, all in favor, signify and say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, a resolution of the Elwood Common Council approving statement of benefits in support of application for personal property tax abatement.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five oh seven, on the second reading. Alright.
Yes.
Need a motion on it?
On this, first night is read.
Yes, to approve the first, the second night's been introduced, yes sir.
Same night's been introduced, motion?
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Danielle's second, all in favor, signify and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to entertain a motion to read and vote by roll call vote on resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh seven.
Motion.
Motion by Danielle.
Second.
Second by Joe, all in favor, signify and say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Everson?
Aye.
Keelish?
Aye.
Noon?
Aye.
Tiner?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye. Okay, on the, uh, next, we have, uh, Noble's auto motion except there's C F ones for personal property. We need to have, have a motion to pass anything on that?
For real estate.
For the register of the real estate?
Yeah, the, the resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine.
Okay.
We'll pass that first, and then pass, so, um, currently, right now, though, we're at, you have to approve the statement of benefits.
Okay.
So now we're just at that part of the personal property.
Right, okay, so we need, I need to entertain a motion on resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, this is, uh, approving the statement of benefits.
John, before we do that, we need to accept just the C F one itself, and then, and then the resolution which references the C F ones, we have C F one first.
Not on personal property?
Yeah.
C. C B one.
Yeah, cause they didn't have, really have.
Thanks, Bill.
So we, we don't have to do any voting on that?
We still have to approve the S B one.
Still have to approve it?
Yes.
Alright, need a motion to approve the Noble Auto C F ones for personal property?
S B ones.
Or, yeah, I'm sorry.
My fault. Motion?
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Danielle, all in favor, signify and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we can go on to twenty twenty-five nineteen.
Dash zero nine.
Or nine, I mean. Okay, we've got resolution twenty twenty-five oh nine, this is approving statement of benefits in support of the application for property tax abatement for Noble Auto Building LLC, Noble Auto Accessories and Window Tent Incorporated and related parties and/or owner of the assets to be leased to the same for real property. Need a motion on first reading?
Motion.
Same, same night is introduced, yes.
Is that you, Kim?
No.
No, it's me.
Well, Danielle, need a second, Joe, all in favor, signify and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero nine, a resolution of the Elwood Common Council approving statement of benefits in support of application for property tax abatement, real estate.
Uh, entertain a motion, second reading for resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh nine.
Motion.
Motion by Sam.
Second.
Second by Danielle, all in favor, signify and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll entertain a motion now to read, have roll call vote on resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh nine.
Motion.
Motion by Danielle.
Second.
Second by Joe, all in favor, signify and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Everson?
Aye.
Keelish?
Aye.
Noon?
Aye.
Tiner?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye. Okay, we're moving on to number four now, Noble Auto Motion to Accept Noble's Auto C F Ones for Real Property.
S B ones for the real property, just a motion.
Okay, that's true, okay, so I need a motion to approve Noble's Auto Motion to Accept Noble's Auto C F Ones Real Property.
Motion.
Motion by Danielle.
Second.
Second by Sammy, all in favor, signify and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? We have to go through three readings on that, Jeff?
I'll just accept the C F one?
Yes.
No, you're good.
We're good there. Alright, moving on, Dunn Wright, old tax abatement, late filing. Need a motion to close the regular meeting and open a public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Danielle, second by Joe, all in favor, signify and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody in the public have any statements or anything they wanna bring forward?
Did you, oh, did he just, did you open public?
The motion was all at once, yeah, it was good.
Okay. And this resolution in public hearing is about the, um, late filing for the twenty-four, twenty, pay twenty-five, and then the twenty-five, pay twenty-six, uh, tax abatements for Dunn Wright.
What was the reason for their late filing?
You got anything to say about it, Bill?
There's nobody in representation Dunn Wright here.
Right.
Which is abnormal. To begin with, I think they have an attorney that's supposed to be taking care of it. But that's, they, they didn't turn in the C F one, even, oh, continuing to tax pay it.
Yeah.
After I called them last year, they reminded them to do it, they had to do it, so then this year, they did it, so they have to backtrack, and you need to pass this resolution so they can, so they can accept both of them, that's what it is.
Yeah, so the, the actual resolution is just accepting and saying that they, you accept that they're late, and then we have to turn around and then pass them all.
Okay.
But, um, I just know there were some questions on if they were completed completely, um, on that.
If there are questions, the council would certainly be well within its purview to hold off on this, to, to table this until.
Yeah, can we table and ask?
We were already late, and you're already, you're gonna be, you're already gonna be waiving irregularities, another month will. You, you can, I, I'm not telling you what to do, but you, you would certainly be well within your rights to do that.
Well, if you take a look at. Jeff's right, you couldn't wait, but the resolution could be approved to go ahead and accept the old tax abatement, and then hold off on approving the actual C F ones, however you wanna do it, because if you look at the resolution number twenty nineteen dash oh three, compliance statement of benefits, there's no numbers in that column, it's not full, it's not filled out.
On which one?
The, uh, C, resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero three, for C F one real property. And left, the right side, right column says, the poison, it's got poison salaries, actually, the first column has nothing, the actual column has nothing. So there is a number four, number potential poison, they say four, but then there's no final number, so it's just, it's not super, not, I mean, it's kind of important to fill out the form completely. So I, that's like, you guys, you wanna just hold off on, if you wanna do the resolution step again, then they got a bunch of fix.
That's what I was just about, if, if we could, because we can't do anything right now, it's a public hearing, but if, could they do that, accept the resolution that they're accepting it, but then we don't pass this?
The resolution which waives the irregularity?
It's not irregularity, it was the late filing.
Well, I mean, well, that, yeah.
Could we?
I'd be willing to do that, and I don't, uh. You wanna see the numbers, you can, I, I don't think you can accept the forms. Right. So, but yeah, if you wanna accept the resolution, which you're indicating a willingness to accept them late, assuming that the numbers are to your satisfaction and complete, yes, you could do that.
I guess probably.
I, I think that makes most sense, so. I, I, you know, propose that we.
We got, we gotta close the open meeting, and then do that, right?
Yeah, 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 okay, that's right.
I make a motion that we close the.
Yeah.
Open hearing.
Any other public comments on this? Not make a motion, we close the public hearing. And open the, uh, meeting back up.
Yep, I made a motion.
Motion by Danielle, second by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then now we need a motion, right, to table it?
If you guys want to pass just the accepting of the lateness here, so like the twenty twenty-five dash ten, we can pass that, and then do not pass the approval of the actual forms.
Don't accept the, the forms.
Accept the late filing.
So this would have been two, two motions, so do the resolution, but, but don't do this.
Okay, I make a motion.
Approve resolution ten.
I make a motion that we approve resolution ten.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, signify and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten, a resolution of the Common Council of the city of Elwood, Indiana, authorizing a late filing of two C F one P P forms.
And then we need a motion now to table the, no, we're good?
No, we need to continue, cause it's a resolution, so we need to do, you need to have like a motion, uh, for unanimous passage on same night as introduced.
Oh, sorry, we're still on that.
Can you go through the three?
Yes, yep, number three.
Alright, need a motion to consider. Tabling, uh.
Nope.
No.
Nope.
Not table?
Okay, so this is resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten.
Oh, dash ten, okay.
We want to pass this, this is just saying that you accept that they gave you these, this, these papers late, and so.
We're still on the first one.
Then.
We need a motion for roll call vote, right?
Nope, we're right now still, we need a motion for unanimous consent to move forward with the possible passage of this or, or this resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten on same night as introduced.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Kim, second by Danielle, all in favor, signify and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then a motion to vote on resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten by roll call.
I make a motion to vote on resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten by roll. I make a motion to vote on Resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten by roll call vote.
Second, second by Joe, all in favor, signify and say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Everson?
Aye.
Keelish?
Aye.
Noon?
Aye.
Tyner?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Now we need to table the next thing.
And that is?
Motion, yeah, motion for approval of compliance forms for Dunright for the twenty-four, twenty-five, pay twenty-five and twenty-five, pay twenty-six. For personal property resolutions twenty twenty-two dash ten, twenty-two, twenty-two dash eleven, and twenty nineteen dash four and the real property resolutions twenty nineteen dash three, which is an approval of eight compliance forms.
I make a motion that we table this.
Motion by Danielle to table this, second by Joe, all in favor, signify and say an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, number four, minutes of approval for the June second, twenty twenty-five meeting. Has everybody read the minutes, does there any corrections need to be made, added? If not, I propose a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Motion by Sam.
Second.
Second by Danielle, all in favor, signify and say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have ordinance number twenty-four eighty-nine, ordinance amending the traffic code schedule for chapter seventy-five of the City of Elwood. This is for the removal of thirteen oh seven South G Street and adding one on fourteen nine Southeast Street.
Correct, so, um, the one at thirteen oh seven South G Street was placed for a tenant of Tyler Hyatt's and they have moved out. I spoke to Tyler and he agreed that it can, it needs to be removed, the people that live there now no longer need it and it will free up some parking space. And then the one at fourteen oh nine Southeast Street, um, they had actually requested for two parking signs on the north side, two handicap parking signs on the north side, um, of that, of that street and, um, Chief Brizendine went down and reviewed it, um, and then agreed that one parking, handicap parking sign would be sufficient. So I've spoken to, um, the residents and they're completely fine with that and they are good to move forward.
Any question? I'll make a motion we vote on ordinance twenty-four eighty-nine.
You made the motion? Second.
All in favor, signify and say an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance number twenty-four eighty-nine, ordinance amending the traffic code schedule for chapter seventy-five for the City of Elwood.
We need three reads on this.
If you wanna pass it tonight, yep.
And a motion for ordinance number twenty-four eighty-nine? Second reading?
On the same night as introduced.
Yeah.
Possible passage.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Danielle. I will now entertain a motion to read and roll call vote for ordinance twenty-four eighty-nine.
We didn't vote.
Roll call.
Do what?
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't vote on the, vote on the last one, all in favor, signify and say an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The motion?
Yeah.
Joe did, I seconded it.
I did, second, Joe, but we didn't vote on it.
And then now we need the motion for roll call vote, right?
Okay, need a motion voting on ordinance twenty-four eighty-nine by roll call vote.
I make a motion.
Danielle?
I'll second.
Second by Joe, all in favor, signify and say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Everson?
Aye.
Keelish?
Aye.
Noon?
Aye.
Tyner?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye. Okay, this next one is ordinance twenty-four eighty-three and I've got a lot of questions about it.
Well.
And I would, I would like to make a motion to table that till we get the billing commissioner in here.
Well, and I was gonna make the motion as well, um, I know that the street commissioner, not street, I'm sorry, building commissioner. And the court, um, have a meeting on Friday to further discuss using the court so that, like we had discussed before, remember, like, we wanted to get away from the liens and get them into court quicker and so that they can, um, the court can chase the fines or suspend license and stuff like that, yeah.
I would like to see the building commissioner come in and explain to them what's going on and what kind of money they're talking about and all this stuff.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
It's not, it's not very clear to me what, you know, what this ordinance.
And I was concerned too with like the, wasn't it forty-eight hours or something on here?
Yeah.
That was a little.
Yeah, they just tucked it in there.
Yeah, yeah. So I make a motion to table it.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to table and second it, all in favor, signify and say an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think we need to make sure that billing commissioner's here to answer the questions next month's meeting, so we know what's going on. Okay, ordinance number twenty-four eighty-six, it's an ordinance of the Common Council of Elwood, Indiana prohibiting residents residing in campers, recreational vehicles and tents within municipal limits of the City of Elwood. Anybody have any questions or remarks on it?
I think this was a very, like, pre, like Shannon had some ideas, went to you, got, you know, and now that, um, we don't have a code enforcer and everything's going back on Lisa, this is enough.
Added to our, the, the court's discussion Friday.
Okay.
So, you, you said Lisa and Judge Noon has a meeting, could, could.
Friday.
You ask them to go over both of those?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, and, and it isn't, I mean, I really think this one was like first draft, raw, and so.
Yeah.
Just add that to.
I'll send it to Shannon. Shannon, go ahead.
Shannon.
Shannon, Shannon. Yeah, no, yeah, so I make a motion that we table this as well, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Second. Motion by Danielle, second by Joe, all in favor, signify and say an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I, I can just, I will put those on the agenda for next time unless someone tells me not to, okay, just, yeah.
Okay, anything else, we got new business, anybody got any business, anything, Danielle, forget, anything new?
Where are we at on, uh, the railroad track crossing? Who?
What, 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 what are you talking about?
Down there on twenty-fourth Street in South C.
You mean lack of.
Yes.
Kim brought it up and, and.
I've brought it up multiple times.
Yes.
Yeah.
Bill, who would I talk to on that, that's my area, I mean. It would be nice, if we just, at least have signals.
Yarcel used to be, you gotta call him and they transferred him out. I don't know now, I think Lisa's the one that has the.
Well, they were also supposed to trim those bushes.
Lisa does, okay. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll talk with Lisa and see what, what we can do about that.
Bill, even if somebody trimmed the bushes like Kim said, I mean, it's, the line of sight is the problem. You can't see down the rail, railroad.
Especially if you're going.
South C and twenty-four.
Yeah, north on twenty-fourth Street.
Yeah.
And then like looking to your east, there's this big bush.
Yeah.
View's completely blocked, there's no view.
It's not by S and S tires.
Nope, you're too far, they have, they have signals.
Yeah, it's blocked too far, I think, right there on twenty. Yeah, but the, uh. It's, it's the, it's the end where the, um, storage units are.
Yeah.
Like you have twenty-second and twenty-fourth and it's still.
Cause you're coming, if you're coming, if you're going north on twenty-fourth Street, you got the house with the bushes on the right and you gotta really, if, you gotta really kinda ease up to see down the railroad track that way. Looking to the west isn't so bad, but looking to the east is bad. And then I would need to talk to Lisa too about coming down C Street. There's a stop sign there, but, um, on the left-hand side or on the north side of the road, the, the corner right there really, it gets growed up with these big leaves, almost said a bad word, and, uh, you can't see nothing around there, I mean, I, I go down that way a lot because I live right down there and so I've had a.
That is your business, you're not allowed to talk to Lisa.
I will, that's why I said, I'll talk to Lisa about that, see what we can come up with.
And it's the only crossing in the city limits without a signal.
Is it really? Yeah, we need to get a signal there, you don't have, arms are nothing, just a signal.
I do wanted to update the council, um, we have started, um, budget stuff, um, I have some meetings with the DLGF and stuff like that, but we haven't had any meetings yet, um, but we will, I'm actually gonna speak with department heads this week, so, um, and then I did receive the email from State Word of Accounts, um, like the engagement that we will be getting audited for two thousand three and two thousand four fairly soon, they don't really tell you when they'll be here, but, um, I have some things to fill out for them, so I did want to update everybody, um, I'll send any information, meetings, they, um, John's had to be at a few of them and, but they.
You did say two thousand three and two thousand four?
No, they've already done those, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, that's what I put.
Uh, yeah, maybe.
Graduated.
What's in that water?
So, those are just two updates that I had.
Nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Danielle?
Second.
Second. By Sam. He's ready. Turn your off now, Sam.
You gotta vote.
We gotta vote.
We gotta vote on it, all in favor, signify and say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.